Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Monday, September 30th. Like to start out on just a quick few housekeeping items. I'd like to get a motion to approve a bill for $407 to the community advocate for the September 30th, 2024 legal notices.
I move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes from the December 29th, 2022 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve or any discussion?
I move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Minutes for the June 27th, 2022 meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. And finally, the minutes for the February 26th, 2024 meeting.
I move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Onto our first public hearing. Welcome, everyone, by the way. This evening, first public hearing is to hear the appeal of Dean Sokas, 123 Maple Avenue, Rutland, Mass., for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 4B, to build a deck 32.9 feet from the rear yard setback on a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling on property located at 26 Fairlawn Circle in the Residence B2 Zoning District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 32, um, excuse me, Plate 39, Plot 125000. Can the appellant please step forward?
Hi, good evening. My name is Dean Sokas.
Good evening.
So I'm here for the, for the deck. The people cannot access their backyard because the house is on an angle from the hill. So from the main floor of the house, they can't access the backyard. So that's why they're looking to build a deck so they can have access to it from the main living floor.
Any questions from the board? Peter, you want to start?
Sure.
Um, one question I have is that the deck is, is it going to be covered? Is it three-season anyway?
No, just regular, open, yes.
Okay. So in that case, I'd say typically for a nonconforming dwelling, for something like a deck that's just over by a small amount, I think it's, is it 40 feet required in this district? And we're at 32.9 with an uncovered deck. I typically don't think that that, you know, derogates the purpose of the bylaw, so I'd be all right with it.
Okay.
Right. Ian?
I'm fine with it.
David?
Same here.
Tim?
Dean, is, is the garage built? Is it constructed?
Yes, it's finished.
Okay. So was that, I noticed a picture of the, of the rear door on the left side of the house from the street. Was that the, was that the egress from the first floor?
That's the basement.
Okay.
Yeah.
There was, there was another one on the, on, looked like the first floor. But anyway, so the, currently without this, there's no real egress from that floor?
Exactly. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, other, I mean, I think it's a, it's a minor change. It's already, I don't think it, it'll be, you know, any more detrimental to the, to the neighborhood than it already is, so I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, I'm fine with it. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. I get a motion, please.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Oh, one second.
So fast.
I move to approve a special permit pursuant to Section 4B to build a deck 32 and 9/10ths feet from the rear yard setback on a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling at 26 Fairlawn Circle, Residence B2 District.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Aye, all set.
Thank you very much.
All set now.
Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. Next up on our agenda, this is to hear the appeal of Donald O'Neil, 688 Pleasant Street, Worcester, for two variances and two special permits to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, Table 1, Section 7E, to operate a gasoline service station with related uses, including convenience store with drive-through window, and to construct two freestanding pylon signs 15 feet from the front yard setback where 50 feet is required on property located at 193 Hartford Turnpike in the Limited Industrial District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 52, Plot 000125. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Yes, Madam Chair. Donald O'Neil. I'm a lawyer in Worcester with an office at 688 Pleasant Street. Here this evening on behalf of Yatco Energy. Also with me is Bob Mishad of MDM Transportation Consultants. You'll recall that we were here a month, month and a half ago, thereabouts, and that this is a, a return visit for us. So I could give a brief overview of what we're proposing. This property is at 193 Hartford Turnpike. It's a 3.9 acre parcel. It's located in the limited industrial zone, and it's also in the Route 20 overlay, which is the requirement in the overlay provision, which allows for the need for a special permit for gasoline, gas, a lean station and related uses. This property is at the corner of Lake Street and Route 20, where there are two existing structures on the building, concrete Masonary block buildings that we would propose to demolish and replace those buildings with a 7,015 square foot, more or less, retail building that would house the gas station, would also house a convenience store, that would include a drive-through window for coffee, pickup, as well as a separate quick-serve restaurant, to be determined. We're not sure who that would be at this point. But they would all be located within the same building, accessed by a common entry. We do have a plan that provides for parking for customers at that location. There's 45 spaces in the parking lot. And there's also an additional parking area for employees on the lot, along with an additional six parking spaces for a second building, which is proposed in a lot, which is a car wash facility. And the car wash facility would, basically, it's a 4,800 square foot parcel with, of building with 13 vacuum spaces and six parking spaces. That would be the related use to the gasoline station use. The gasoline station itself has six gasoline pumps, which are directly, located directly in front of the building. In addition, there are two high-speed diesel truck lanes off to the westerly side of the property that are shown on the plan. That would be accessed by a, a separate entry off Route 20. The traditional relief that we're seeking is for two pylon signs, which we're proposing to be located within 15 feet of Hartford Turnpike. Under the provisions of the zoning bylaw, calls for them to be located half, with the half point between the front yard setback, which is 50 feet, which would be 25 feet. We then are proposing to locate them 15 feet from Hartford Turnpike, which is within the landscape buffer area. And the placement of the signs 25 feet back would be, we believe, impractical for visibility from, from Route 20, and also in terms of the site layout would place them directly in the middle of the, the paved area in terms of the gasoline pumps and the other travel lanes that would be needed. And also, again, as indicated, the placing them too back from this, too far back from the street would, I think, make the signage less alerting to, to passing customers that might want to pull in for a gas station purposes. The issue has been before the planning board. We've had one meeting with them, scheduled to go back again this coming Thursday. We had, and last time that we appeared, I think the issue for the board had concerns about where, was basically the traffic questions regarding access to and from Route 20. We have since our meeting with you, got the peer review comments back, and the peer review is not taking issue with our proposal with respect to that access onto Route 20. The key thing I think that's worth noting is that the, ultimately, we would need not only planning board approval, but the ultimate authority would be MAST DOT. We've had favorable exchanges with them and feel that their approval will be forthcoming. But, you know, you don't know until you know. But the issue that we have is we would like to try and get the board's approval for their use, which would be, which is required by special permit, and also for the pylon signs and the location proposed, so that in going back before the planning board, you know, those issues would be resolved. Mr. Mishad is here to answer any questions that you might have regarding the traffic situation. And unlike the, what I learned from last, the last time was before you, we're hopeful that the information that we've provided to you will be sufficient for you to make a decision. However, if after having the opportunity to speak to Mr. Mishad and answer any questions that you might have, if there are still any doubts that the board might have with respect to that issue, that I would request that, rather than close the hearing, that you keep the hearing open and wait for further review at the planning board level, if that's what the, you feel is necessary. So with that, I, I don't know if you, you can, do you want to hear from Mr. Mishad directly or do you want to, before he answers questions? We're prepared to do that if that's what you'd like to hear.
Well, did the boards, any outright, I'd like to hear from
Sure.
Mr. Mishad. Okay.
I agree.
Would like to take over. We had you in front of us before, so we're ready to hear about traffic.
Sure, thank you. For the record, I'm Mishaw, Managing Principal of MDM Transportation Consultants. I am not going to make a full presentation of traffic transportation. What I'll say is that we've been engaged in conversations with DOT and through the peer review process have been supplying clarifying comments and data to address certain commentary from, from peer review. We believe that we're substantially through the peer review process at this point. The, the concerns that we've heard relative to the site really relate to some ongoing issues with Lake Street that are related to the Edgemere Crossing project across the street. As the board is probably aware, on occasion, Lake Street has longer queuing conditions as a result of an increased or elevated level of traffic activity that's specific to the Edgemere Crossing development. Through the monitoring program that that developer was obligated to perform, became clear that there may be some need to change the lane orientation of Lake Street to address that issue. We're aware of that ongoing effort. We are in receipt of the monitoring report for that project, and we're also aware that that applicant, that proponent, is in active conversations with both DOT and the town to effect improvements to Lake Street to address that issue, that pre-existing issue. With that as a background, we've been very careful to develop an access concept that's now shown on the site plan that would introduce driveways along Route 20 that would allow most, if virtually not all, traffic to access and leave the site directly to and from Route 20 with little, very little reliance on Lake Street, although there is a proposed driveway on Lake Street as a practical matter to allow for some level of access to or from the property specific to, for instance, the car wash. One of the primary access elements is a driveway that would allow for vehicles to make left turns from the property so that they could continue east. That was specifically reviewed with DOT. The commentary that we've received from DOT related more to the easterly driveway to ensure that anyone who is accessing the property as they're traveling eastbound could properly decelerate and make a left turn into the property. And as a result of that conversation with DOT, we've, we've modified the driveway in the plan to reflect that. That more easterly driveway, which is actually on a second sheet, it's not shown here, is as far east as possible. It's an enter-only driveway. That would be the principal means of access into the property from Worcester Way, traveling eastbound, meets all of the applicable safety-based standards and DOT criteria for deceleration, lane width, swept path, et cetera. The central driveway, the one in which you can both access and leave, is shown on the left side of the drawing, which is on the screen. You'll see, you have the ability to make a right turn into the property from that location as well as leaving that location to make either a right turn or a left turn. That's been modeled. It, the, all of the analysis that was subject to peer review indicates that it works quite well. It actually benefits from its relationship to where the traffic signal is, where, which will actually create gaps in traffic. And it's located in an area of the frontage that is not influenced by the vehicle queues that occur at the signal. So we're confident that the design as it stands, shown on the site plan, is an efficient one. It works well based on the, the analysis. It's been subject to peer review. It will be subject to access permitting with DOT, so there'll be another level of technical review that we're obligated to undertake before that specific design is approved. So with that, I will say that the range of uses that are proposed here draw between 80 and 90% of their activity from the existing traffic stream. These are not uses that a motorist would select as an exclusive trip to go to or from. In simple terms, if you think about the convenience of getting gas to or from your commute, same for car wash, these are facilities of convenience. They're not solely destination uses, as would be the case for other types of retail, like a supermarket, for instance. So by and large, the increase in trips, new traffic that this would introduce is very, very modest, in the order of about 40 to 50 inbound trips over the course of an hour, split east, west, and north of the property, and likewise leaving. So the level of increased traffic to this area will essentially fall well within a percentage or less of what's already on the road. With that, the analysis all shows that it works well and is inconsistent, by the way, with the analysis that's been submitted in support of the Edgemere Crossing project as part of its monitoring. So there's no inconsistency between what we've modeled, which shows that it works, and what has been submitted as part of the regular monitoring provisions of that project. So I think we've, we've got a lot of technical angles covered here, but a long way to go as it relates to technical review and approvals specifically by MAST DOT. So I'd be glad to answer any specific questions the board might have.
Thank you. All right. You didn't want to start?
Sure. So I'll begin with traffic. Thank you, Mr. Mishaw. I take the upshot of all that to be that you don't expect the development to materially, materially impact the traffic conditions at the site. That all makes sense based on what you, what you presented in terms of what the uses are. People are gonna, who are going in that direction anywhere are gonna pull off and get gas. And that, that makes sense to me. I don't have any reason to doubt that. As far as the, the use, I don't have an issue with the use of a gasoline service station and associated uses in that area. I think it's consistent with the way that area is developing. I don't think it derogates from the purposes of the bylaw. And then relatedly, as to the signs, for that reason, I think the midpoint of the 50 feet makes sense if you're talking about an industrial use, but for a commercial use, I think it makes sense, again, for the reasons that you suggested. For safety, for the public to have notice of what's there, and to have time to safely react on the road to pull over, to have the signs be closer to the street and more visible seems reasonable to me based on that, and again, doesn't seem to derogate from the purposes of the bylaw. So I, I don't think I have any issues with this. Thank you.
Um, I generally agree with Peter. At the last hearing, I think I was concerned about left turns from the gas station onto Route 20. I'm still somewhat concerned about there, about that. Could you talk a little bit more about the, I think you articulated some problems with Lake Street and, and exits or egress onto that? Could you just elaborate on that a little bit more?
Sure. I mentioned that there was a monitoring report that was submitted to the town by the proponent of Edgemere Crossing. That was a provision of this decision, the approval, which had indicated that a lot more traffic is using Lake Street to get to Edgemere Crossing than was contemplated in the originally submitted and reviewed report. The provision of the monitoring said that if there was a change of more than 10% in either the volume of traffic or the direction in which the traffic was going, that mitigative actions would be necessary, or that should be identified and discussed in concert with both MAST DOT and the town. So that's ongoing. And what that really means is that today, there's an exclusive left turn lane on Lake Street that if converted to a through slash left turn, right, so it's more of a general purpose lane, would enhance the capacity of Lake Street to accommodate that extra demand. So that would represent the mitigative action that is being discussed, hasn't been agreed to necessarily, but it's being modeled and discussed, that would represent what needs to happen there to make Lake Street work better. Our project does have a driveway on Lake Street. The amount of traffic that we expect would be generated to or from Lake Street by this project is, is fairly modest, frankly, particularly during peak hours. The car wash is most proximate to where that driveway is located. And by way of scenario, if you were going to get groceries on the way, you might decide to get a car wash, right? So that makes it easier for you to turn left into the property, do the car wash, and then return back to Lake Street to perhaps continue your trip to the supermarket, right, as, as one example of how this might function. The, the level of traffic or additional traffic that would be generated to Lake Street by this project is less than 30 vehicles over the course of an entire hour. So it's very, very small. Now, the, the higher generators, if you will, would be the gas convenience, the drive-through component of the convenience in particular in the morning. For instance, someone wants to get a cup of coffee, those types of trips, nine out of 10 of those trips are already being drawn from Route 20 on your way to Worcester Way, for, for instance. Or perhaps eastbound. You could access, if you're going to Route 9, for instance, you could, you could get a cup of coffee here by turning left into the easterly driveway, and then return to the trip by making that left turn without having to go to Lake Street to go through the signal to do that same movement. That represents a significant efficiency in how traffic would flow to and from the site. And that specific movement, that left turn, was modeled very carefully using various computer models and simulation models to ensure that it could actually work and function well. And, and it does. And there are criteria for, for determining what is acceptable. The amount of traffic that would generate on that particular left turn movement would be highest in the morning, modest in the evening, and about the same on a Saturday midday as you'd find at a nighttime period. So relatively modest. That said, that left turn, if it were not provided, would have the potential for secondary impacts, unintended impacts, that could either mean increase in traffic to Lake Street to get to the signal to make that left turn, or more likely, someone making a right turn to get into the left turn lane at the signal on Route 20, to turn left into the Plaza, to go through the Plaza, to get to the easterly driveway at the Plaza to continue, continue their trip. So really, the intention of this design is to make it most efficient, as efficient as possible, for anyone who would like to continue east to do so directly and not have to rely on Lake Street or the Plaza to do so as an unintended consequence if that left turn were not allowed. DOT in their review of that takes that very seriously. They, they weighed in on the left turn movements from the Plaza across the street, and they determined that in that particular case, because of the volume that it could potentially generate, and because of the orientation of the unsignaled driveway at the foot of the hill of Route 20, that it presented challenges that they weren't comfortable with. And so they didn't, they didn't allow the left turn there. This is a different scenario. This is in a flat section of Route 20 that's proximate to where the traffic signal is. It's metered by the traffic signal. It has ample sight lines, and the volumes are very modest. So for a number of reasons, we believe that it's an appropriate design solution. And it doesn't mean that DOT is necessarily going to blanket approve it. They could request a monitoring of the operation with a potential restriction depending on the outcome of the monitoring, not unlike what's happening across the street with Edgemere. They could require that it be right in, right out. You know, so right now, our, our understanding through our conversations with DOT, through the peer review process and our own modeling, all indicate that this is something that's acceptable and, and workable. So that's where things stand.
Thank you.
So I agree with how well Peter articulated the points about the signs and then the use. Again, that the, the traffic, and I appreciate the, the depth that you just went into. The, the hangup I have is with the left turn out onto Route 20. And so I just have a few additional questions about that, just to, to get them out there. In that peak morning AM commute time, how many of those left turns out of there do you see in your analysis?
So, and this is all documented in our June
Yep.
2024 study. So it would indicate that there are roughly about 100 turns per hour, left turns per hour, virtual almost all of which are passenger cars. That would represent a vehicle every 30 seconds to one minute on average, trying to make that type of a turn.
And that's at what time of day?
That's in the morning. So that would be hours between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning in particular. Whereas in the evening, between 4:00 and 6:00, typical commuter periods, that volume goes down to about 50 to 60, about a vehicle a minute. And on a Saturday midday, we're at about 48, about 50 per, per hour, about one, again, one per minute. So really, the highest level of, of that activity would most likely be in the morning, passenger cars, left turns synchronized to a large degree to how the signal functions and, and that it's creating the gaps that are appropriate and necessary to efficiently be able to make that turn. Based on the volume conditions on Route 20, east and west, that level of traffic, that 100 per hour that I mentioned in the morning, will operate at level of service D or better, which is from DOT's perspective, an acceptable operating standard that does not introduce excessive delay or queuing on the driveway itself. I will also point out that to the extent, and these are projections, if you really want to get to the signal in the morning, the, the signal works quite well in the morning. And to the extent someone's not comfortable using that unsignaled location for a left turn, they'll have an alternative to be able to get to the signal, which operates at level of service C or better in the morning, to be able to do the same movement.
So you're saying in the morning, it's, it would be more ideal to go to the Lake Street signal through the westerly exit? Is that what you're saying?
Not necessarily more ideal. It, it would introduce the same amount of delay perhaps, right? But you'd have the comfort, if you will, of having a signal to have to process through as opposed to finding a gap, if you will, at the driveway.
Yeah, 'cause I, I can agree with you that the signal will produce the, the spacing needed on the eastbound lanes. It's just that the westbound, I don't buy it. Like, it just, if it's full, it's full, and you're gonna say more than one vehicle per minute is gonna come out of that left across the westbound lanes.
Right. And that's what DOT looks at in particular, and what we've already presented to them for analysis. We are under, undergoing a more thorough technical review as part of the review as part of the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act process, MEPA process. Uh, that's a month's, multi-month long review process that in this case, uh, involves additional input from D O T, uh, not once, but on several occasions. And then following the completion of the MEPA process, uh, a more technical process called the access permitting process. Uh, so all of the points that you raise, um, will be looked at in much detail by D O T, not once, but on several occasions. Um, and really, they're, uh, the appropriate, um, authority, uh, for allowing or disallowing movements onto their highway. Um, I mentioned, you know, unintended, unintended consequences of anything that's developed here. Um, to the extent a left turn is not allowed, um, folks will have to rely on Lake Street more regularly or, uh, would most likely use the Plaza as a staging point to be able to continue their trip eastbound. Um, I don't think those conditions are ideal. Um, I think they can be addressed more directly by what's being proposed. And we've made that case to D O T, and I think that, um, while they're still in a position to have to review more before issuing a permit, I think there's a certain comfort level that what we're proposing is reasonable.
I will say that I am reassured that there are so many additional layers of review that this is going to, uh, have to pass through, uh, in order to, to come to, uh, come to be. Um, so, uh, but with that, uh, did, I'll ask a separate question. In your analysis, did you take into account the, uh, the traffic study or report about the UPS facility that's going in on the Centec Boulevard, I believe, is it?
Yes.
Yeah. Did you take that into account?
Yes, we have. Um, so, so the, uh, permitting submittals for those were, were the engineer record for the UPS facility. Uh, so we're aware of it. Um, we had actually filed, uh, this project, uh, at about the same time, but because of the filing protocol, hadn't expressly called out the UPS project in the filing, in, in our analysis. We, what we did do is we used a very conservative growth assumption in this filing that surpasses, it exceeds the volumes that would be added, in that case, by UPS to this location. Um, the peer review through it, through, through their review of the documents asked the same question. We've provided a technical response to that question, and we believe that we've answered it, uh, appropriately. Uh, we've done a sensitivity analysis, uh, that demonstrates that with or without that UPS project, that the analysis in the original filing, uh, accounts for all of that. That, yeah.
Okay. That's good to hear, because if there's gonna be an extra couple hundred trucks heading eastbound or westbound in that area at the same time, it's just good that that's being considered.
Correct. And, and, um, just to be fair, um, it's not a couple hundred trucks an hour, um, you know, it,
Yeah, not, I'm sorry, not per hour, but per day.
But it's, yeah, per day. Um, the, the amount of traffic that would be inclined to use this intersection by UPS is, is measured at about a one percent change, two percent change. So it's, it's measurable for sure, but we've actually accounted for about a three percent change in the, in, in, in the intersection volume that is above and beyond what ultimately got filed for the UPS project. So, again, we've been very conservative in how we've analyzed this. We wanna make sure it works, too.
Yep. Okay. Uh, that's all I have.
Ken?
So, so I think, you know, based on the, on the last meeting, I think it was Mr. O'Neil's suggestion, for the, for the peer review that was done, I had a chance to review that and your responses to it. You've done a good job tonight of summarizing and explaining, uh, this project. So I really don't have, um, I don't have any issues with it. My concern last time was the left turn, uh, on to Route twenty. Um, but I think that's, for me anyways, that's, you've allayed that fear tonight. Um, so I, I think it's a, I think it'd be a good project for the town, and, uh, it certainly looks like it's within the nature and intent of the bylaw to me, so I'm for it.
All right. Louise, do you have anything additional to add?
No, I don't think so. The board, um, hit a lot of the same comments and questions and concerns that the town has related to that left turn out on to Route twenty, but, you know, is, um, closely monitoring it and will be anxiously awaiting, you know, conversations with the applicant, Mast D O T, and see how that all plays out.
One more question. If, if, if the final determination from Mast D O T changed the driveway here, changed the location of the driveways, I think that was the only, the only last thing on the response to the, to the peer review. Perhaps if that's the case, they'd be back in front of the board anyways, right?
Um, I'm not sure on that.
Not necessarily.
No.
'Cause, 'cause we're voting this plan. But if D O T changes the plan, does that have any effect on what, on the, on tonight?
If it's a material change, is that the?
Right. And you could condition, you know, that they submit the new plans related to what was, um, proposed here tonight and approved, and what's at planning board, and what is approved at planning board can be. And that could be a new business item on your agenda to review. Um,
A lot of eyes on this, that's for sure.
More, more of a curious question. I don't think I would, I wouldn't be in favor of attaching that condition.
Okay. All right. Well, we have two ways to go. We can call for a vote, or we can...
Public comment?
Yeah, public comment.
Yep. All right. We need public comment. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. So, if we call for a closing in the public, we're gonna have to go to a vote.
Yep.
Okay. So can I get a motion to close a public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. Do we wanna try with a motion?
Yeah, unless there's any discussion.
I,
I'm satisfied.
I'm satisfied. I'm confident.
I'll give it a whirl. Um, so I move to approve two variances and two special permits under Section Six, Table One, and Section Seven E, to operate a gasoline service station with related uses, including a convenience store with drive-through window, and to construct two freestanding pylon signs fifteen feet from the front yard setback when fifty feet is required at one hundred ninety-three Hartford Turnpike Limited Industrial District.
Hi, thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Uh, next public hearing, this is to hear the appeal of, uh, Joshua Lee Smith, three eleven Main Street in Worcester, for two variances to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section Six, um, four D and Section Seven E five, to remove the existing four pylon signs and replace them with a single pylon sign, um, which is thirty-eight point six feet tall for both the five seventy-one Boston Turnpike and the five thirty-seven, five fifty Boston Turnpike that will exceed the allowed thirty-five feet and advertise business on multiple lots on property located at five seventy-one Boston Turnpike in the commercial business zoning district. This subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate thirty-four, Lot zero-two-four-zero-zero-one. Might I ask you to state your name for the record, please?
Good ea- good evening, uh, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Joshua Lee Smith. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Bowditch and Dewey.
And for the record, my name is Bart Steele. I'm with Viewpoint Sign and Honning in Northborough, Mass.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'm noticing on the screen a depiction of the site. We, we did submit a slide deck. Is that, um,
Yep.
Loaded? Great. While, while that's being loaded, I'll just, uh, give a really, uh, brief background with respect to the site. I'm sure all of you are very familiar with this site. Um, this is located at five seventy-one Boston Turnpike, and, um, the property owner is Shrewsbury Crossing Two LLC. Um, the site, uh, is known as Shrewsbury Crossing. There are two large parcels, two tracts of land that adjoin each other. Um, and on, on the Easterly side is the, uh, At Home Staples Working Gear side, as well as the recently approved, recently constructed, and now occupied, uh, Fidelity Investors Center. Um, so that, that's on the Easterly side. That is the five seventy-one side of the parcel. Um, the other side of the parcel, the other side of the site, which makes up Shrewsbury Crossing, uh, is at five fifty-one, and that has the, uh, Stop and Shop Restaurant, as well as the former Fidelity site. And thank you, um, as you can see in the aerial here. Uh, so that's on the, on the left side. And, um, if you could advance to the next slide, please. This slide just, uh, is a, an update, um, just because it shows the footprint. If you slide up a little bit more, down on that lower right, you could see that, that's the new Fidelity building, to give a little more context. Uh, next slide, please. And so, uh, pretty straightforward request here. Uh, what we are asking of the board is to approve the replacement of these, there, there are a collection of four signs that exist at the midpoint of Shrewsbury Crossing. Um, and you can see all of them here. Um, you can see that Stop and Shop one, the, the Japanese restaurant, and then a couple of other signs in the, in the background there. And then there's a Staples sign. Um, so four total that are congregated together, uh, that were built at different times, that have varying designs. They, they don't have any kind of uniformity. Um, some of them are dated in terms of their design. Some of them are, um, uh, in need of maintenance and repair. So, uh, my client felt at the opportune time, given the new Fidelity site, uh, the new Fidelity building, uh, At Home, which is relatively new, and as, as I'm sure most of you have heard, Stop and Shop is going to be vacating the site. So it's a bit of a transition period, um, with some, some new buildings, some new tenants, but also some, some unknowns with respect to prospective tenants that may be taking that other side, uh, on the westerly side. So with all of that, uh, my client is proposing to remove, uh, and replace these four signs, these four dated signs, with a new, uh, more visible, modern sign. And I'm sorry, could you advance to the next? And one more, and one more. So we'll just get right to the elevation that's, that was submitted. Uh, this is what my client is proposing. Um, this sign, yes, it would exceed, uh, the maximum thirty-five foot, uh, requirement as set forth in the bylaw. Uh, what we're proposing in terms of the height would be just a few feet taller in order to accommodate, uh, all of these tenants, all of these occupants of both sites in one sign. So we feel it's more efficient, it's more clean, uh, it's a better look and feel, it'll provide that uniformity that I think this shopping, um, center deserves. Um, it certainly as well, for those who are familiar, really familiar with the approach, especially from, if you're, uh, headed eastbound, you're up a hill and then you're, you're coming down. So the height of this sign is really not so dramatic from, from that viewpoint. Um, but the visibility, it is important to have, if you're gonna have a consolidated sign, to have the sign be large enough so that consumers, customers can, can be able to see, uh, all of the occupants of, of both sites. So that's, that's really the goal that we're trying to, uh, achieve. And, um, so one variance is with, with respect to the height. Uh, the other variance pertains to a provision in the bylaw, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, uh, that, that basically says that if you've got an accessory use, that if you've got an advertising sign, uh, or, or some type of a pylon sign, that that signage needs to be on the same lot of, of the principal use. So here, as I said at the outset, um, the site is, both, both parcels, both sides that make up Shrewsbury Crossing are, they're owned by corporate affiliates. Uh, they're, they both, both parcels also are subject to, in its title, a reciprocal easement, an operating agreement. So this shopping, this shopping center has, for decades, operated pretty much as one. There, there are shared utilities, there's shared access, there's been shared signage. So, uh, that's, that's one of the main reasons why we feel that, that a sign that, for example, the, the Stop and Shop, although it's on the, on the westerly side, should be able to have a, a signage on the, on the adjoining parcel next to it. Um, they, they work together as one. So with that, I, I didn't wanna go too long. Um, we're happy to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
All right. I do have a quick question on, um, just the sign itself. Can you just talk to us about lighting, um, what the sign is made of, just general?
Certainly. Um, the, unlike, unlike the old signs that have high output fluorescent lamps and old magnetic ballasts, all of the lighting inside this sign is gonna be low voltage, uh, LED illumination. So, um, it's gonna be much, much greener. And you can see from the design that unlike the, the big bulky boxes that they have on these four that we're gonna be removing, it's much sleeker. Um, the frame on it's gonna be extruded aluminum. It won't be sheet metal. If you look at the, some of these older signs that were, that that outdate me, and that's going back a ways, um, you know, they're sheet metal with, uh, pop rivets and, um, acrylic faces with seams. And, um, so this, this is gonna be extruded aluminum. The faces are gonna slide in through a retainer system, so they're gonna be good and secure. Uh, the faces are gonna be a combination of polycarbonate, which is Lexan, and, um, some flex face on the larger ones at the top. So, uh, much more, um, much more green, much more contemporary, much more sleek. And, you know, when you total the square footage for the four signs that we're removing, it's seven hundred and twenty-three point two four square feet. This sign, although it's slightly higher, is still a hundred and one point four nine square feet less of signage than what is there now. So from a mitigation standpoint, it, that seems like a good swap off. And combining everything that's on all four into one nice, neat, clean package seemed like it would be a reasonable approach.
Right. All right. Let's open it up to the board. Uh, Louise, before we go on, is there anything else we need to consider?
No, um, no comments from, you know, town staffer, um, zoning enforcement officer. I think, as they stated, a more consolidated, you know, concise plan.
Okay. Thank you. Peter?
Sure. Um, so I think this makes a lot of sense. I appreciate what you're trying to do. I think, um, you know, these two plazas, as you mentioned, really do function as a single destination. Um, so having, you know, a single consolidated legible sign makes a lot of sense to me. I think what I'm struggling with a little bit is you're only, what is it, three and a half feet from the rule, uh, from what's required in the rule in terms of the height. I understand, you know, that, that the net amount of signage is going to decrease, but at the same time, the rules aren't meant to be sort of like a starting point for negotiation, right? Like, if there's a, if there's not a good reason why you can't meet the height requirement. Um, and so I just kinda wanna understand that, where it's, it's a relatively small amount of space. It looks like the, the banner at the top there that says Shrewsbury Crossing, that right there is the amount of the, of the overage, or if you take the lighter colored bars that go across and aggregate them, you're at two feet eight inches. You're almost all the way there. Um, if it were that there was a piece of machinery or, or something that had a fixed size that you had to accommodate, and therefore you have to be three and a half feet over, I understand. But this is sort of a creative thing. Like, you can design it, and on top of that, as you mentioned, the Stop and Shop sign is going to be something different, and you've got two blank spaces. So I just wanna, I'm not saying I'm against it. I just wanna understand why we can't just make it fit within the rule.
If I can, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, just to put it in perspective, this, the, the existing Stop and Shop sign is, um, seventy-three inches in height. This sign is eighty inches in height. There are certain anchor tenants that require, if I, if I, that require that type of square footage, um, in order to go along with this, to, to go along with this agreement.
Okay.
So, um, and, and yes, you could make this into an ugly box, like the four boxes that are there by eliminate a couple of the decorative reveals and so forth, but then you're gonna have a big ugly box and, um,
No, sure. But I think,
So that, so the design of this, um, you know, technically, anything's possible, right? But this, you know, you've got four signs that you're combining all of this square footage. Same thing with At Home. Currently, At Home, At Home has ten by ten square foot
Mm-hmm.
of signage on that one, on that one panel. And I think they may have another panel over the other side. But that, At Home right now has ten by ten. You know, the, the height on this one is only eighty inches. So when you take into consideration, um, what they're giving up in terms of the height, um, you know, the additional square footage and height really is very minor.
Okay.
In the overall discussion, and we hope that you'd consider that.
So in other words, in a perfect world, it's not that it's impossible. It's just that we're working the art of the possible.
Nothing is possible.
You gotta get a bunch of people to agree to something. So, okay. I understand that. All right. Thank you.
Ann?
Um, I think it's gonna be an improvement. Um, and I think it generally fits within the criteria, um, articulated by the bylaw. So I think it's, it's a good move.
I agree with Ann. I think it's a vast improvement over the current signs. The, um, and the, the relief that you're seeking, I don't see that as contrary to the particular area in which the site's located, being right along, uh, Route nine, where there's other businesses for shopping and whatnot, all up and down Route nine, that, um, so I don't, I don't have any issue with the, the three point six feet, three and a half feet, whatever it is.
Thank you.
I'm familiar with the program.
I'm familiar with the property. Aesthetically, this is a, a real, a big improvement. I would agree on that. Was there a, was there a sign designed that was thirty-five feet in height? Was that a consideration from the beginning? Like a first pass preliminary design?
If, if I may speak, um, we actually had two signs proposed. A larger one up on top of the hill and a smaller one, a mini B if you were down below.
For each parcel? For each parcel?
Uh, for each side of the driveway.
Okay.
All right. Um, so the compromise was made to present to the board, uh, one display that would help accommodate everything into, into one piece. So in fact, we were, originally had much larger presentation.
So, and so in that, but for the second one that was all in one, was there ever, hey, let's just make this thirty-five feet high, no higher? Was there ever part of the design? Just curious.
No, it was, it was more that what was required from the tenant's expectations and the tenant's leases and their existing amount of square footage, to not reduce it such that it would end up being a problem where, where they would bark at it.
All right. So is it more so that reason, that it's thirty-eight and a half feet versus the, if you're coming over the hill with, you know, the Sunoco station on your right, the height so people can see it going eastbound on the westbound side? So it sounds like it's more for the tenants than it is for the, for the sightline for the eastbound traffic. Is that fair?
Somewhat, yes. Yeah. This, this parcel is also, the, the, it's massive in
Yeah.
terms of its length
Yeah.
compared to anything around it.
Yeah.
So what appears, and it's set back much further than it, than, than we could, we could actually move the sign closer, right? We could be, what, twenty feet, I think it is? And it's, you know, this sign is much further back than, than what's allowed by right.
Yeah.
So I think that, um, when you take into consideration the scale of the frontage of this and the setback, honestly, this is, it's, uh, it's not gonna be out of scale, and it's not gonna be...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, um...
Okay.
It, it's a little bit of both. Um, the elevation coming, if you're, if you're going eastbound, you've got the hill. But even as you're coming, if you're coming, uh, from the east, westbound, you've got the curve, and you've got a number of, you've got, uh, distribution lines that run, telephone lines that run along.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's a bit of, there's a lot going on there.
Go ahead.
And, and, and
Yeah, the topography.
And, and your point with respect to the, the number of tenants, and I think Peter mentioned this too, you look at these tenants, uh, the majority of these tenants are not small mom and pop outfits. They've got some serious requirements, uh, corporate-wide, nationwide with respect to their leases. So it's a matter of being able to juggle and satisfy and appease a number of these big corporate, uh, tenants, which the town, I'm sure, is very glad that they're here, but, um, they've all got their own opinions. Uh, so
That's fair, sure.
So this, this was the best, uh, most realistic, most pragmatic solution, we felt, that satisfies everything, all of, all the goals in terms of the visibility, the safety, uh, and being able to have each one of these signs, uh, each one of these tenants be able to have their signs displayed in a manner that, that they felt would be appropriate for their own, uh, augmentsies.
Fair enough. Thank you.
So I, I do not have an issue at all, and I think you're actually doing a service to all of us who spend a lot of time going in and out of that, to remove all of the, um, eye pollution and clean it up and make it, um, much more appealing. My question is around the individual, um, um, buildings and the signage that you have on each tenant. Is it matching what's on the sign? So is there some cohesion in terms of, you know, so for example, at home, I believe, has a big sign in front. And I don't think that you've had to come in front of us for any of the signs on the buildings, um, which tells us that, um, the relief that you're seeking, I think, is, is fair to appease the tenants and, um, but I'm just curious, is there going to be individual signs on each building?
If I, if I may, um, each of the tenants already has, each of these tenants already has signage on the building that's pre-existing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's no cha- there's no plan to change that. I do have, I do have something I could present to the board, um, that has the list of, uh, shows the existing wall signs and the approximate sizes. And I believe that's on the formula that, um, Barry and team presented with, uh, to Patty and her team to, 'cause she's keeping track of all of the square footage of everything there. And, um, we, you know, we worked with her in getting that up to, so that it had all accurate information in it.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the question pertain to the, does, does the wall signage match, um, or is it compatible with the pylon signage in terms of their look and feel? Is that the question?
Yeah.
Yes, I think the short answer is yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think, again, if you're going to clean the site up and make it, um, appealing, having that continuity of design is really important. So I think we're doing a service, actually, to, to all of us. I think the safety, um, aspect of it makes sense to me with the east and west coast, or east and west, um, westerly approaches to it, both, um, I think, meet, um, the criteria for what we're looking to do. So I don't have an issue with it. Um, but thank you for all that additional information. Um, I think if we're, we're good, we would, um, like to move this to a public, um, is there any, this is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to be heard? All right, can I, uh, get a, a, a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
Sure. Um, I move to approve, uh, two variances pursuant to Section seven E four D and Section seven E five F, to remove the existing four pylon signs and replace them with a single pylon sign thirty-eight and six tenths feet tall for both the five hundred seventy-one Boston Turnpike and the five hundred thirty-seven to five hundred fifty Boston Turnpike, that will exceed the allowed thirty-five feet and advertise business on multiple lots at five hundred seventy-one Boston Turnpike Commercial Business District.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.
Did we need to vote in favors?
Oh, oh, wait a minute.
No.
I don't think they were.
All right. Next on the agenda, uh, this is to hear the appeal of Lushun Liu, uh, seventy-seven Kingsbury Street, Wellesley, Mass. for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section six D, so, excuse me, seven D, to provide fewer parking spaces than required by the bylaws on property located at two eighty-eight Boston Turnpike in the limited business zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's tax plate thirty-two, plot five zero seven zero zero zero. Welcome, and if you could state your name for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lushun Lau. I, I represent the owner, Claire Chen, as she, she bought the, uh, the property. It used to be a bakery store, and she was, yeah, intended to, uh, convert the bakery store into a full cha- uh, restaurant. Uh, the restaurant's gonna serve liquor, but there's no, uh, bar. And then the, um, the, the restaurant is only dining with no takeout, no delivery service. And, uh, the, the existing, uh, restaurant, uh, they come with the, um, uh, non-conforming parking, uh, lot. Uh, we, we, we did, um, our best to max out the parking capacity within the same parking lot. Uh, we can provide twelve parking spaces, which include two employees' parking, and also one, uh, when accessible parking space. So, uh, there would be, uh, two employees' parking plus ten customer parkings, yeah. And, uh, you want to introduce yourself as a...
Hi, good evening. My name is Claire Chan. I'm the owner of the two eighty-eight Boston Turnpike. And this is my second restaurant. It's gonna be a hot pot restaurant. And, uh, just like, so we know it's, um, um, the parking space is limited, but it's, uh, um, so usually it's, um, not like a full house every day, so it's, um, just, I think, only like a fifty percentage occupying of a, so the seat is a seventy-two, and the table is a sixteen tables. But, um, just as you know, it's, um, I know it's have a public, uh, street parking on the, um, Tatum.
Tatum Road, yeah.
Tatum Road.
Yeah, we, we have checked with the, um, the building department, the, the adjacent, uh, neighborhood we, we, that there is a le- legal on-street parking. But, uh, of, of course, we, we try to encourage a customer to utilize the, um, the, um, our own parking lot instead, yeah. But since we, uh, she has purchased the property, and we, we spent a lot of time in the area, and then we, 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 we don't seem to see a heavy traffic on the side street. And, uh, I, I think it is, is definitely the customer can try to make, make use of some of the, um, on-street, uh, parking, yeah. And, and also for the, uh, the existing parking lot, we, we will try to, um, you know, do some lighting design, landscaping design to compile with the, uh, la- latest parking lot, uh, design criteria, yeah. But then i- in terms of the overall, um, the building and then the, the signage, we, we try to, uh, make use of what, what is existing there. The, we, we, we will, we use the existing, uh, sign. And, um, and, and of course, we, we, we try to put like two, two sign attached to the existing building. But if, but it will be close to our, uh, Boston Turnpike, yeah. You want to add anything more?
Okay.
So I'm here to answer any question if you have, yeah.
Sure, thank you. Thank you very much. Was there anything else before we move on?
Um, I, I just wanted, uh, tell you the, uh, the, the requirement for, uh, parking, right? Um, it, it is supposed to be every, every two, every four seats, we, we supposed to provide two point five parkings, parking spaces, yeah, but...
So could you give us the stats again? Um, how many total seats are, do you have in the restaurant?
Uh, right now, we, we, we try to, uh, pro- propose seventy-two, but we can scale it down if, if, if you, if there's a, a require.
So you have seventy-two seats, and the requirement is?
Forty-five parking space, I think.
Forty-nine is required.
Forty-nine is required. And you have how many?
Twelve.
We have twelve, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, got it. Okay, thank you for all that information.
Yeah.
Um, Louise, is there anything else that you wanna add?
Um, not at this moment. Um, you know, we, well, I, we understand, um, you know, parking is tight here. Um...
Okay. All right, well, let's see what the board has to say. Peter, questions?
Yeah. Um, so I, I, congratulations on, on this concept, and I, I think it's great that you're opening a second place. I do have concerns, I guess. It sounds like the, um, with seventy-two seats, um, if the, if the place were full, you would need substantially more parking spaces than you have.
So...
And I, I worry about the spillover, both on the adjacent streets, and I see in the file here that we also have a letter, um, from the, the plaza across the street about, um, they, it sounds like they already have a problem with customers of the subway, which is sort of kitty-cornered across using their parking, because there's not enough parking there, and they're concerned that, that your tenants would be using, or your guests would be using their parking spaces as well. So I, I'm a little bit concerned with the disparity, the, the, um, you know, being really significant. And I wonder, is there, have you thought about reducing the number of seats, the number of covers in the restaurant? Is there somewhere in the middle here where we could land that might make more sense? It just seems like, if you're forty-nine required spaces versus twelve, it's like a really big difference.
Yeah, yeah. So I seems, I think we already changed it. Before, I think it's, um, six, five table by the side door, so we need to reduce one already. Why we need the, um, like, we, we don't wanna, like, make it the last seat, and then when the customer, it's a total different. It's a half a restaurant, so when the customer coming, we don't add any, like, a table, attach to, uh, chairs, attach to table, or like, we can move the table, the table will, uh, statue on the ground. So even it's, uh, like, a six seat, but for example, I have, uh, three children, and if I go outside with my hu- husband, so it's gonna be, um, user like a six people table. But they, if we just, like, reduce the table only four, it means one people gonna sit on the hallway. So our restaurant is only doing the dining, not the, and they take out, and it's totally different than from the other, like, Chinese, uh, cuisine restaurant. We are serving a pot on the table, so the table should be very, um, stable, very statue on, on the ground. So we wanna keep, um, more seat, making the customer feel more comfortable. But it doesn't have to be like, um, get other, like, we serving a lot of people, like, at once. So we will co- like, control the customer.
Right.
So like, not like occupying a whole, like, full house. It won't.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I, I'd be interested to hear, um, if, if folks on the, the, um, adjoining street, you know, have concerns. I guess my, my, my hope for you is that your restaurant would be a big success, and that would mean that there's people in every seat. And if there's people in every seat, there just might not be enough parking, and you might have a lot of cars going down the street, and that, and that could be problematic for folks who live in the area and who are driving in the area.
I, I think it's, um, we are also, it's of pick of the, um, neighborhood business. They, our restaurant, um, because, um, open rating, I think in the auto zone, they operating time is in the next business, it's totally different from us. So, yeah, we talk about, also, I think, um, the auto zone owner, and we talk about with, that she, he is very happy, so we feel like, uh, coming, so maybe we can ask him, like, we can use his, um, like, uh, less space when the duly closed, when they close, so we...
Like a shared parking plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll pause there. I'm interested to hear what other folks on the board think.
Anne?
So I think the concept is great. Um, but the disparity between the required number of spaces and the proposed number of tables is just really big. Um, you know, in situations like this, sometimes business owners reach out to adjoining, um, businesses to see if they can make a lease agreement or something. Um, I don't know about the businesses to the right of the building, the wellness place or any, I mean, obviously, it's not our, our job here to solve your business problems, but love to help you try to succeed. Um, but there is, for me, too large of a gap right now between the proposed number of tables and the required parking spaces.
Okay.
So I've, I've Okay. I, for the most part, agree with, with what Anne just shared, and it, it, you did, uh, express that these is slightly different from your regular restaurant, trying to be completely full all the time, uh, with it being hot pot, so the tables you want to be very immobile and heavy and whatnot. But I, I agree, I also have a hard time granting the relief of, uh, thirty-nine spaces to go on Tatum Road and Gleason Road or elsewhere, uh, for the folks living in that neighborhood. You know, if you're busy on a Friday night or a Saturday night, and they wanna come home from work, I can see the aggravation of trying to get in and out of their, uh, neighborhood. Um, so like, like Anne said, the relief just seems too great.
Tim?
The, um, I think it's wonderful what you're doing. The, um, but by my math, for, for seventy-two seats, um, you know, for every four seats, so that's eighteen times two and a half, so by my math, that's forty-five parking spots that are required. Um, and you have ten.
Twelve.
Um... Oh, two of them are employee, I think.
Two are, two are employee.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I think it was Anne who brought it up, um, but those two businesses to the right, and I know that this is not, you know, our purview to solve it, but it would seem that, and I, I agree with, I believe Peter mentioned it, I hope your restaurant is full. But the overflow on Tatum Road and the, and, and the potential of people parking across the street and crossing, you know, four lanes of Route nine isn't the greatest idea either for safety, but it just, I just wish you had a bigger But it just, I just wish you had a bigger parking lot. It's just too, it's 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 too big of an ask from what's required in the bylaw for parking spots based on the number of seats you have in your in your restaurant. I wonder if there's another way to do it.
I have a question, because it's in the um Tatum Road, it's a public street parking. So it's we just like a um give a load in the to the customers so they can do the um public street parking. Um, time about lot using the plaza parking. I also, I don't think they will cross street from the plaza to this side. It's very dangerous and also it doesn't have any like walk cross for them.
I understand your question about Tatum Street and it would it would certainly make sense. It's almost like that's going, that would probably happen anyways. But in in terms of the bylaw, it's your own parking lot is supposed to have this many spaces, not not relying on Tatum Street or any adjacent streets to help the overflow. So that's the that's the trouble I have in it. I just um I feel badly that this is the predicament. But if it's the size of your parking lot that's the issue, not the people. I don't I don't disagree with people who just park on Tatum Road legally, no, no problem at all. Um, it's just that the size of your lot is just too small for, it's too big of an ask for for what's required.
If we, yeah.
Through the chair, please. Yes.
Yeah, I I just discussed with Claire Chen and she she said the one of the option is she she can cut down the the number of seats by uh sixteen, cut down sixteen and then we can have the um the restaurant down originally seventy-two, right? We can we can we can, can we keep it down to fifty-six instead?
I wonder, Madam Chair, just to sort of.
Then we can have a.
A kind of point of order. I'm I'm open to the idea of talking about if there were a um a small, a smaller number of seats in the restaurant, if there's somewhere in the middle that might make sense. I can't speak for the rest of the board members. So I think there are times when we say, okay, we'll accept fewer than are required, but not necessarily so many fewer than are required. I wonder if it would be advantageous to continue the hearing to give you folks a chance to think about what you might like to do so you don't have to do it right now. Um, and then come back to the board with a with a different proposal, hearing the direction that the board's going in. Unless unless folks feel like there's not a a place where you could land where um it would that that would be worthwhile. But I just, I hate for you to be on the spot where you're thinking about your business, sitting there at that table and trying to figure out how many tables would would work. You know, if you could come back in a for our next meeting.
I I have a couple of questions for you.
Yeah.
Claire, do you own the building? Did you buy the building?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you own the building and um you're allocating two employee parking spots, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so that leaves you ten spots. And um.
Actually, we can do one because the usual, yeah, it can be used a couple. But when we talk with the purchase, so she recommend us use it two.
Two, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So usually, we can do um we, yeah, couple because we're gonna render a downtown for the employee. So we're gonna use just a one business um car to like a couple, pick up the employee.
Bring employees in, I see, okay.
So probably so we can do eleven, so parking for the customer.
So I I think I'm sort of reading the tea leaves here with the rest of the group. Um, and I think what our concern is, is that if we, um, if you elect to continue the hearing, you can spend the next thirty days coming up with some solutions that the next time you're in front of our board, we might be able to get closer to what you're looking for. If we make a decision tonight, it seems to me that we will not probably be deciding in your favor, which will not be in your best interest.
Okay.
So the choice that you have right at this point is to request a continuation of the hearing, which would mean that you come back to us in thirty days and spend the thirty days perhaps talking with staff um at Town Hall to help you resolve the problem. And that would be our suggestion to you. We do think that that would be in your highest and best interest. Of course, if you want us to make a vote, we would vote. And if we did not roll in your favor, unfortunately, you would not be able to proceed forward.
Okay.
Sure, sure, sure. We would prefer to continue the hearing for.
You would like to continue.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I think you're doing the right thing. Thank you.
Yeah.
And we want to see you succeed. Um, there's been, you know, we've had businesses come in front of us that had a deficiency in parking before. And there's some school of thought that says, you know, if a building, if a business is willing to take the risk that there's not enough parking, then that's incumbent upon them. But of course, our job is to protect, you know, the welfare of the zoning bylaws. And so we want to do the right thing. Um, I also do have a concern about the public parking nature of Tatum. Um, that tends to be a tight street anyway. And I think if you've gone down there at night, you're gonna see that there's a lot of people that use the on-street parking just to park in front of their homes because they don't have a lot of parking on there. They don't have big driveways. So I have I have my own concerns about it. I I do think all of the board has a concern. So I do think that proceeding forward as a continuation is a good is a good next step.
Okay. Sure, sure.
Yeah, okay, so this is a public hearing. We're going to call for public comment. We're gonna listen to the public comment and then we are going to proceed forward with your request for continuation. So um is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this matter? Sir, can you step forward? There's a microphone here and we'd ask you to identify yourself and your address, please.
Uh, you don't mind if I sit down? Bad knees.
Don't mind if you sit down, but we do need to hear you.
Oh, sure. Oh, that's okay. Thank you very much.
You know what? If you pull a seat up right there, you know what, Tim, do you want to pull his that seat over? Great. Does this mean you're gonna get comfortable?
I can lean on this.
If you need it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. When I was in the industry and someone.
Could you, uh, could I ask you to identify yourself, please, and your address for the record?
My name is Edmund Pocket and my brother, Thomas Pocket, who isn't with me tonight. We are the owners of Pocket Realty Trust. Okay, I live at sixty-three Grafton Street and he lives on South Quincy.
Okay.
All right.
Wonderful.
Now, um.
You're a butters, I assume.
Yeah. I'm gonna do some pitches. I'm uh, like I said, if someone did a presentation for that like that when I was in industry, I would have fired him. Okay, so let me just address a couple of things here without going off course too much. Failon is what they call an island neighborhood. There are only five streets off of Route Nine that you can enter. And then parallel to Route Nine, there's only two that you can get out to one of these egresses to Route Nine. Now, I was born and grew up on Gleason Road. And at that time, the framers of the zoning laws recognized that this was a community or a neighborhood of moderate income people. The house lots were small, fifty by a hundred. If you had a hundred by a hundred, they thought it was a ballpark. A number of years ago, a group by the name of Gre- Greendale Rehab or Greendale.
Physical therapy.
Greendale Physical Therapy?
Yeah, well, what do they have to do with this? Well, they have a lot to do with this, okay? Because if we start at picture five on Gleason Road, we saw two cars parked there, one next to a hydrant, and this is every day. Now, we own the property across from there, of which is was only two cars.
And which property would that be?
On Gleason Gleason Road.
Okay, okay.
Okay? Now, the next picture, which is three, if we look at three, we see, we see this um rehab center. And their parking lot is basically empty, okay? And then we go to two. Nope. My brother's gonna kill me. Okay. So if you look down Gleason Road, you're gonna see a number of cars there. You're gonna see ten cars, four hundred feet. Those are all the employees of this center. They're not the, they're they're parked there every day. So what does that have to do with these two fine people here? Well, when the Wellness Center or whatever it is, therapy center, physical therapy, came before the board, they requested that they have the right for their employees to park on the street and not having enough parking. And they said, how many? Oh, two, three, three the most, okay? All right, so there's ten. And no one likes to see a a business not succeed. But let's look at what the original purpose of that neighborhood was, okay? It was an island neighborhood made up of single and two-family homes, young kids. Many of them uh family, the houses were built in the twenties, twenty-six and that. Lot of new people there now, which can afford these homes, opposed to something that is a lot more lux- luxurious. We always maintained a very low profile profile business because of this, such as a woman's boutique, a men's shoe store, a holistic, I don't know what they would call it, but a holistic yoga center. And that was to keep the traffic down and to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood. Because I'm sure when they made these rules of zoning, they took into account the flavor of what that area was, was the neighborhood. So what happens is they restricted it to only two hundred feet back. It's fine. I think things have changed since then, uh restaurants or anything like that. Any business at all, you had to go before the board and get the okay from the board. So I brought those two pictures in to show you what Gleason Road looks like every day, okay? The bean counter was set with the need that they could not have anybody in that store other than customers who want to purchase or discuss at a table the cake, the wedding cake or whatever. Well, that was good, but it kind of slipped between the cracks, you know? As the idiom goes, it's hard to put the genie back in the bottle. So Tatum Road was a nightmare while the bean counter was there, okay? And Gleason Road, I don't even want to go there. Well, you've got a picture of Gleason Road in front of you. That's what Tatum Road looked like. Now, there's a few things that are missing here and I'm, it's kind of associated with the food industry. Restaurants do not care about loading docks. So that means that you have on a minimum of somewhere between a half hour and an hour of a forty-eight foot Cisco truck parked from the building extending into the road, such as the case on a person who lived about two hundred feet down the street. They couldn't get the ambulance down, the fire truck. So that isn't good for the neighborhood. I'm talking more from the neighborhood then. I have nothing to benefit from this. The other thing is, is that if you were to make come, if you were coming from Worcester and heading towards Boston, the only way that you can make a U-turn is to cross two lanes of traffic. Otherwise, you're gonna take a right, go all the way up to the bowling alley, turn around and come back to go to Worcester. And people don't do that. When made things even worse, it's a hundred feet up the street, they put us, they put another traffic light as a crossing light. I don't know if it was to slow down the traffic or people were getting hurt or what. I I really don't know, but. So you, what you have is you have people having to cross traffic over there in order to get in the opposite direction because they're on that side now. They're on the eastbound side. So the other thing is this, and having been around the food industry, I don't know too much about computers. In fact, even the cell phone, I uh I think should be a bag phone so you don't lose it. But in any case, I looked up some of the proportions of numbers of chairs, of which these fine people have sixty-four seats, due to portion of how many supporting people you would need. Now, they have twelve uh parking places there. From zero to ten customers, you need, and this is really tight, you need a chef, a waitress, and maybe a dishwasher. That just opened your door in the morning. So there's three, so now they have parking for nine people. As that goes up and goes to ten, that number doubles. So when you get up to sixty-four, you're way out of line, way out of line. And I mean, in all honesty, I feel bad for the people. They, you know, I wish them the best of luck in that. Sometimes you gotta look before you buy a car. If you've got a family of six, you don't want to buy a car that's only gonna fit four. So um after what we experienced on Gleason Road, both my brother and I are not gonna let this happen again. And I'm glad to see a lot of new faces here and a lot of people interested in the town and things like this. But if you drive down there and you take a ride down Gleason Road, you'll see the ten cars every day. And then if you try to make an egress out through Tatum Road and cross over in front of Hooters there to make a U-turn to go into Worcester, it's like Russian roulette. So um there's nothing for me to gain from this. All I'm trying to do is trying to keep uh the flavor of the neighborhood. And also, I mean, we have rental property there. And how many people want to come home, you know? I mean, if you live on Prospect Street or Spring Street or Raymond Ave or Kennelworth Ave and every every day, you gotta kind of negotiate to get into your driveway. And I mean, this exists now, there's five streets, remember, that enter onto Route Nine. This exists for a long time on two streets, Gleason and Tatum Road. So um the neighborhood isn't going to tolerate the addition of this of of this coming back again. They're not going to. Neither would anybody here. If you saw that you had, you know, three cars parked in front of your house every day, you'd say to yourself, wait a minute, if you're a renter, I'm gonna complain to the landlord, you know? So.
Thank you.
That's it. I wish them the best of luck, but I think that on the other side of the coin, you gotta look at what you buy.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, so do we have to move to continue?
Yes, to October twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Should we close the public hearing?
No.
Yeah, we leave it at that.
We're continuing.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Can I get a motion, please?
I move to continue um this hearing to our next meeting, October twenty-eighth at six thirty P M.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
We'll see you then.
Thank you.
Oh.
Yeah, new business in the meeting schedule.
Pardon me, I got lost in the excitement of this evening. Okay, um, so we do have some new business to attend to and I'm going to turn it over to Louise so she can explain to us about the Town of Northborough Partial Dam Removal Project.
Yeah, so we are in receipt of, it's a chapter ninety-one Waterways, water-dependent, you know, mass D E P um notification that Planning Board and Zoning Board and I believe Conservation all have the documents in that have been provided in your your Google folder, that they are doing a a partial dam removal. And so it is just a requirement that we notify you, you can review it, and the the chair signs off.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I have one question, just wondering if they're planning on closing Reservoir Street for any period of time.
I haven't heard either way yet, but I can keep the board informed. I haven't heard either way yet, but I can keep the board informed of that.
Thanks.
Good question. Okay. All right. I think that wraps up our agenda for this evening, except for, um, we do have a, um, concern around the dates of the upcoming meetings for November and December. Um, this does happen frequently around that time of the year where our Thursday or our Monday date falls right around Christmas and Thanksgiving. So the, um, discussion was around moving our November date to a Thursday.
Wednesday?
Uh, was it the twen-, um, I'm sorry, I'm December. We were hoping to move the November date to the thirteenth.
November twentieth.
I'm sorry, November twentieth. I stand corrected. So if that's okay with the board, that would be the Thursday, or sorry, excuse me, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So, okay, good. And then that would mean that we are suggesting that we delay the December meeting to January, um, given the cadence of December.
Right.
So if that is okay with the board, we're gonna proceed forward with two new dates. So if we could make the, um, schedule, um, reflect that our next zoning board meeting, um, October will stay with our regular Monday meeting, November will be November twentieth. And then December, we will, um, not have a zoning board meeting, and we will pass that on to January.
And at your next, in October, we will have a full, uh, twenty-twenty-five, uh, new meeting schedule for you to review. Um, so that January date will be available for the public next meeting.
All right, wonderful. All right.
Is there anything in the, in the, the, not the review, the, uh, down the line that looks like it, it needs to be addressed in December that we're gonna miss or have to push on?
Not at this time. I think my only concern was one ninety-three Hartford Turnpike, or, yeah, Hartford Turnpike. And we've resolved that, um, and there's no continuation. So, um, I think we'll just make that abundantly clear to any applicants that come to our office or, or, um, submit an application of what the meeting schedule looks like.
Okay.
Next few months.
Great. Okay.
All right.
We've, uh, we've concluded, uh, the meeting, so if I could get a motion to adjourn, please.
I move to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right.